Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session? Mr. Lemay, second. Mr. Mecca, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except for Mr. Borenstein, Mr. Meyer, and Dr. Venator. Mrs. Beeger, would you lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cell phones off and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Sis, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Are there any board acknowledgements? Okay, moving on to public expression. Dr. McClary, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your cooperation. We have one person signed in to speak at public expression. I'm sorry, two people. The first person is Dr. Reddy. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Shashidhar Ramchandrar Reddy. I am a resident of Williamsville School District. I'm a dentist by profession. My daughter goes to the school district. Based on few things which have happened in the last four years, which I'm going to do it in the next meeting, my only concern is when I've gone through the numbers, this school district has got like 9,900 students. There are 75% of students are Caucasians. 12% are Asians, 4% are African-American, 4% are from mixed background, 4% are Hispanics. But I personally, because of my personal experience and the people I know, we don't feel that this board represents us in many aspects. For example, first instance I'm going to explain, I had to take my daughter for a testing at the Summit Center. They tested my daughter and they said, oh, she can't, she doesn't know how to hold a fork. Oh, that's why she has to be an autistic child. My response to them was, maybe if the same testing was done in China, the rest of the Chinese population would fail this test. Okay? I want to make sure where, from where I'm coming. When I look at this whole room, I'm the only person from a different background. And then people say, oh, I know what you feel. Sorry, you guys can never feel what I've gone through because you're never walking in my footsteps. So, this is my, this is my solution for this problem. I talked to so many people, they said they can't vote in this system because they're not citizens. Most of them immigrants or on work permits, or they're having a green card, people who send their kids to school in Williamsville School District. So this is my solution for this problem. If they cannot be elected, I'm sure some of the parents can be selected. Because at the end of the day, if the kids, it's the future of the kids, they can stand for the elections in the future, but as of now, their parents cannot stand for election. They cannot vote in the election. They cannot decide the destiny of their kids. When I look in this room itself, I can see that nobody is like me. Nobody is like me. How, why is this, was this ever discussed in any board meeting? How come, when we have 25% of the population is a different type of group, why is not, somebody is not sitting here? Has anybody ever thought about that? Till date, how many of us have decided, how many of you guys have decided and said, okay, how come we have 25% of the kids in our school district of different backgrounds, different countries? How come there's nobody here sitting? So this is what, I want to have you guys make, do a study or find a solution, how this can be corrected. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan DeBoigne. Okay, state your name and address for the record.
Pardon me?
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Susan DeBoigne, 117 Lindhurst Road, Williamsville, New York. Good evening. I am here to speak for my grandchildren and my son and his ex-wife. We've been having some issues with residency ruling, and I know that I've sent many letters and information to the school district and it's kind of fallen on deaf ears. Without, because I only have three minutes, I have to sum up without going into all the detail, but the bottom line is, they sent a letter home saying that they were going to send spies to my house to see that the children and my son live there. I have the letter right here. They said at that time that my grandson was only seen once, he's 10, 10 Stanley Falk School, one time leaving my house, yet he takes a bus assigned by the district to school every day and home every day to 117 Lindhurst. My granddaughter attended Casey and now attends Williamsville North High School. She's been cut off of her wits. She was in advanced psychology, cannot get her summer work done because she can't pull up the programming. She's a cheerleader, she wants to try out for cheerleading. The information has to be in by tomorrow, her doctor's certificates, or she can't cheer. She's over there getting fitted right now, but I don't know. Is it going to fall on deaf ears? It's preposterous. I sent in pictures of my grandson getting on the bus. I've spoken to the bus garage, they backed that up, that yes, he does. My son goes to work in the morning, I'm their caregiver during the day, I get them to school, I take my granddaughter to school, I pick her up every day. I'm there to get Matthew to school, I'm home when Matthew gets home. We are a family trying to get our children a good life. They have a split home, and as you know, it takes a community to get a child raised properly. We feel at this time, with everything the kids have gone through, Matthew being in Falk School, he has special needs, this would tear him apart, first of all, because he says to me, Nana, this is the first school I really like, I feel like I belong here. Well, will he not be able to go to school come September 4th? Will my granddaughter not be able to cheer? Will she not be able to go to North High School with her friends? And bottom line is, we all live in Williamsville. Her mother lives on Seggs Berry Drive in Williamsville. I live in Williamsville, my son lives there. Where do we send them to school on September 4th? It's not going to be Maryvale, it's not going to be Clarence. We have nowhere to send our children. We have sent the information, I know I've sent it, sent it in and I was told that it was shared, so I hope that you all come to the conclusion in the best interests of our children. They really need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one else who has signed up, but is there anyone else in the audience who would like the opportunity to speak to the board this evening?
Okay, moving on to consent agenda approval, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, seven personnel, eight business, and nine special needs and student activities as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Dr. Merzoff, would you like to make some introductions?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrel. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Board of Education to our newly appointed assistant principal at East High School, Courtney Charleston Smith will be starting her duties there very soon, and we look forward to her presence at East High School, and we'd like to invite her to the podium to say a few words to the board.
Thank you. I'm Courtney Charleston Smith, and I'd just like to thank the full committee, the board, all of you, and the superintendent for approving me tonight, and I am so excited to be at East, and I can't wait for September to come around so that I can get started, and I'm so thankful and appreciative of you picking me for your candidate. Thank you.
I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district, Karen Heims, East High School, teacher aide, 27 years and nine months of service. Michelle Quirchani, Heim Elementary Teacher Aide, 24 years and six months of service. Kathleen O'Brien-Gunning, Heim Middle Teacher Aide, 35 years and seven and 11 months of service. Christine Fun, Dodge Elementary Clerk Typist, 18 years and five months of service. Glenn Rikia, South High School Laborer, 16 years and nine and six months of service. And Earl Schwartz, Dodge Elementary Custodian, 12 years and nine months of service. Thank you, everyone, for your service to the district. Moving on to item number 10, the minutes, would someone like to make a motion to approve the July 1 organizational board meeting minutes? Mrs. Van Sis, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to our minutes? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item 11, President's Report, events. The County of Erie, 2020 Erie County Shared Services Meeting took place on July 11 from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Erie County Community College North Campus. Dr. McClary attended the event, would you like to report on this event?
Yes, thank you. This is, I believe, the third year of shared services throughout Erie County. It's an initiative from the governor that requires all towns and cities and municipalities within Erie County to be part of a group that talks about ways that things can be more efficient by sharing with other communities. This particular meeting, or at this particular meeting, it was also an invitation for any school districts who would like to be part of this. School districts are not mandated to be part of the shared services, they are given an invitation if they're interested. I think it's going to come up later on when we talk about assignments, but I'll mention it here, that it's going to be my recommendation that we as a board not participate in this. We already do a lot of sharing and work with the town of Amherst, Amherst Central, Sweet Home Central, and so those ideas that are shared with those groups seem to be an effective way to proceed without adding another layer of going to a meeting, for example.
Thank you. The 2019 Western New York STEAM Conference took place at Hilbert College on August 5. Mrs. Van Sis, would you like to report on Mr. Borenstein's behalf?
Yes. Mr. Borenstein just wanted to report that he did attend this conference. It focused on STEAM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, and the primary focus was how to better prepare our students for the future. He said he did walk away, he will be willing to share the slides with us from the event, the conference that he attended, but he was extremely impressed to see how this STEAM is being incorporated into education, and then seeing that Williamsville is including much of it already.
Thank you. There is a new teacher orientation breakfast happening on Tuesday, August 20 at 8:00 a.m. at Sean Patrick's. Myself, Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, and Mr. Borenstein will be attending that event. Opening Day for Staff takes place on Tuesday, August 27 at 8:00 a.m. Excuse me, it's in the North High School auditorium. Mrs. Beeger, myself, Mr. Lemay, Mrs. Van Sis have, said they can attend, and Dr. McClary, you are a maybe.
Yes, you can switch that to a yes.
All right. Opening Day is always a very exciting event. The Erie County Association of School Boards, Western New York Educational Service Council, and ECASB Law Conference took place on Wednesday, August 7 at Salvatore, Salvators. Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, and Mrs. Van Sis attended. Do either of you wish to give a report at the table? No, I did see reports submitted, so that is fine. Back-to-school ECASB reception will be Wednesday, August 28 at Chez on Seneca Street. So far, we have Mr. Lemay and Dr. McClary attending this dinner. Does anyone else have anything to report under ECASB? Thank you. Moving on to New York State School Board Association, NISP, Tuesday, August 13, and Wednesday, August 14 will be the advocacy meetings, that means one took place today. Mr. Lemay, would you like to report on today's meeting?
Sure. This morning, we met for 45 minutes in Representative Congressman Chris Collins' office. I submitted my report on what we discussed with him. Some of the key points he was talking about was declining populations, unfairness in the current census system, his belief that most of the problems that the education system in the state is due to mismanagement at the state level. He talked about some net neutrality and some, his belief behind school choice and supporting charter schools and the voucher program. It was a very interesting and uncomfortable conversation, I think, at many points. We did have talking points from NISP, we actually met this morning about an hour prior to that meeting, so that we all kind of came in armed with what we wanted to present and what we wanted to discuss of Representative Collins. We then went to lunch after that, and then headed to this afternoon to Mr. Schumer's office. Senator Schumer, who was not in, but Jordan Nicholson, the original director, who was a former teacher of nine years, sat with us for close to an hour and discussed some very interesting things. This meeting went a lot smoother, I think. We'd asked some questions about budget, what we could look for from the feds, where the direction was, you know, what are we going to see, you know, is the possibility of another government shutdown, that sort of things. And a lot of those opinions you can see in my report. Mr. Schumer, though, does not support the charter schools, he's, and I'm quoting here, supports strong public education systems, period. Funding, he's very against cutting any funding or programs related to poverty, for example, free and reduced lunch, breakfast programs, also believes the president may be on board this year behind that same notion. And mental health, believes that there's an appetite for this debate and feels that the Senate will most likely take this to vote. Nothing more than we've really already heard in the news, I guess, so. Both these meetings were very productive and interesting, to say the least. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with Representative Brian Higgins, and then in September, date to be determined, we'll come back and have a meeting with Senator Kristen Jitterbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay, for that report. 100th Annual NISP Convention is taking place on Thursday, October 24 through Saturday, October 26. This year, it will be in Rochester, New York. Attending, we have Mr. Borenstein, Mr. Lemay, Dr. McClary, and Mr. Meyer. Mr. Mecca, you said you no longer can attend, correct?
Yes, that's right.
The pre-convention communications workshop will be attended by Dr. McClary, is that still correct?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Does anyone have anything else to report under NISP? Mr. Lemay?
The convention, you could add that Dr. McClary and I will also be presenting a class on Friday afternoon called School Boards. Are you listening?
Excellent, thank you. All right, school visitation guidelines and school visitation schedule, this is item D. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the school visitation guidelines and school visitation schedule for 2019-2020 as presented? These are Board of Education purposes and expectations for board school visitations. Your motion, Dr., or Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, is there any discussion? Mr. Mecca?
Yes. On the guidelines, it specifies that all board members should attend at least three of these school visitations, and I am unable to make any of them, as I have been in the past because of my work schedule. I arrive at work at 7:30 in the morning. I don't feel comfortable adopting these guidelines, so I plan to vote against it unless we make a change in that respect.
Okay, so you're referring to expectations of Board of Education members. Item 1 says each board member will be asked to sign up to attend a minimum of three school visitations during the academic year.
Correct.
Any other discussion on this item? No? Okay. Mrs. Beeger, yes?
I'm, maybe I read this more loosely, but the next line says if unable to attend, board members will ensure that other board members attend in his or her place. I always thought our practice was just ensuring that three board members were there regardless of, like, taking count of who was at which one. And is this rewritten, or is this the policy that, I believe this is the policy we adopted last year?
We ended up keeping the same policy because there were no further suggestions.
So, I mean, I personally read that just a little more loosely, thinking it's not, it's asked to sign up, but if you can't, then another board member. I don't know if it's in his or her place as much as just we need to make sure that there's three?
I see it that way too, because we were hosting a breakfast, and so we don't want to have the staff show up and then have nobody from the board be there. So I think, I read it loosely to have a minimum of three as well. And the word asked, to me, is sort of that loose language. Mrs. Van Sis?
Perhaps we could just take out for number one, the word each, and just put board members will be asked. It seems to, then, instead of the each board member, you don't feel that pressure that it has to be individualized. Board members, if you can, you know, what we're asking is that you try to attend three, but by taking out the word each, I think it just makes it a little bit more broad that it's the board members as a unit.
I like that suggestion. Mr. Mecca, are you comfortable with that change?
No, I still don't feel that that resolves the issue. I think if we were to change the language to indicate what we actually want, which is what Mrs. Beeger was saying, which, which is that we would like to have three board members in attendance, I think that would be sufficient.
We have that for number two.
Then I think we can take out number one.
I personally would prefer to keep it because I think it is good to encourage school visits. We learn a lot by visiting the school and seeing what's happening in the building, seeing it for ourselves with our own eyes is different than just reading about it in a report or having a presentation, but that's just my personal opinion. Is there further discussion on changing the language? Mrs. Van Sis?
I am also in favor of keeping number one because I think then it becomes too broad that we're expecting just three people, and just from past history, I would like to encourage that all board members are trying this and not the same three or the same four people attending all of the school board visitations.
All right, so we are voting on this as-is. All right. Yep.
Can I propose, and it's not really an amendment, but can I propose that we change number one to just say board members will be asked to sign up?
So Dr. McClary is reinforcing Mrs. Van Sis' language change, is removing the word each. Are we comfortable with that? Okay. And I do understand your objection. Okay, all in favor on this motion?
I'm sorry, clarification?
Yes.
Are we voting on the amended change or the actual policy?
Amendment, it's a language amendment, just to remove the word each from number one.
I'm assuming pluralize the word members.
Board members, yes, correct.
Thank you.
And I see Mrs. Carey taking notes on that, so I'm sure she has it for us. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Abstentions? Motion carries 5, 1, 0. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the board retreat date as follows? Our retreat date will be Saturday, January 11, 2020, at District Office. Looking for a motion to approve that date. Mrs. Van Sis, thank you, and Mr. Lemay, second. Is there any discussion on that retreat date?
I have a question?
Yes.
Had, have you gotten informal feedback from each person that he or she is able to attend on that date?
I believe Mrs. Carey sent it out a while back, and to my knowledge, no one responded that they couldn't make it.
All right, thank you.
Good question. And obviously, we don't have everyone here tonight, but we'll do our best to plan the retreat. Anyways, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Item F is our Board of Education Community Forums. This year, we would like to hold two community forums, one on Saturday, November 2, at North High School, and the other one in the spring, on Saturday, April 25, at South High School. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Board of Education Community Education, or Community Forum dates as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you, second. Dr. McClary, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our Board of Education Liaison Guidelines and Assignments. Just give me a moment to click on this. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the Board of Education Liaison Guidelines and Assignments as presented? Mr. Lemay, second. Mrs. Beeger, is there any discussion? Dr. McClary?
This brings up under item G about the Shared Services Committee, that currently the designee is to be determined, and so, as I stated earlier, I personally feel that we do not need to be part of the shared services, and so that would be a decision that the board would have to make. If they agree, then it would just come off. If you as a board feel that someone should still go to these meetings and participate, then you would need to appoint someone.
Does anyone wish to comment on that, Mrs. Beeger?
I haven't been involved with the Shared Services Committee in the way that you have, but I think you've been involved in the structure of it, so I trust your recommendation. If you feel that our district doesn't need to be a part of that committee at this time, so I'm personally fine with that. so I'm personally fine with that. And another, I don't know if we want to finish discussing that. The other comment I-
Can I just touch on that one real quick?
Please.
I further support your recommendation. Actually, when this proposal for adding this as a committee assignment last year came to the table, I actually voiced against it. I felt it sort of to be somewhat of a political stunt, but also the fact that we have two representatives that go to our Erie County Association of School Boards, and you're also on the board of that organization, and we are very well represented in that area, and we can get all of our information regarding, like, whatever they're going to give us at a Shared Services Committee, I feel confident that Erie County Association of School Boards would provide us with updates if there were changes.
Okay.
So, we could just leave that as TBD and just not fill it. I feel like that's completely appropriate. If there happens to be something later in the year where we feel compelled to attend, we could then choose a board member to attend.
I'm sorry, I may be incorrect, but I'm not sure that it's open-ended. I think we either have to join or not join. That could certainly be looked at, and if you choose to leave it as a committee, sure.
Does anyone feel strongly about removing it altogether or just leaving it? Mr. Mecca?
I would accept Dr. McClary's recommendation.
I'm good with that as well. So we're going to amend that to remove Item G. I'm also noticing that the Audit Committee is missing a chair. I'm happy to fill that position as chair. Yep, Mr. Mecca?
I have a few issues with this. Number one, with Erie County Association of School Boards, we always had alternates assigned, and I don't see any alternates assigned for any of the ECASB spots, and I wonder why that is. And the other issue that I have is that this weighting system, which has never been on our Board Liaison Assignments before, it seems to de-emphasize our role within ECASB, as those positions have gone from a weighted average of 1.0 in my mind to a .5 now. And I serve on some of those committees, and I'm a little offended that my involvement now has gone from a 1.0 to a .5. I think we're involved in this, in these committees due to our goals as a Board of Education. One of our goals is legislative advocacy, which is one of the ECASB functions that I fulfill as the person appointed to do that role. I would like to see us take this out altogether, this weighted system, and I'd like to see us have alternates as we have had in the past. Otherwise, I'm going to vote against this, too.
Okay, I believe we're just voting on the guidelines and the assignments. The weighted chart that you're describing is sort of an internal tool that we've previously sort of discussed.
So that won't be published, or available anywhere?
I don't-
I mean, I just, I don't want that to be part of the official record, because I think it shows-
I agree with you.
It shows that we're decreasing our involvement with ECASB, which I don't like.
No, I support that. I believe this motion entitles us to just vote on the guidelines, which are the five guidelines at the top, and the assignments. And at our next meeting, we could go ahead and consider assigning alternates for ECASB at that time. I think it would be unfair to do so at this meeting, since we have members not present, and we all need to go back and take a look and see who can take on that responsibility of being the alternate.
We could always volunteer those that aren't present.
So you want to do that? Dr. McClary?
The one comment that I would like to make is, I totally understand what you're saying in terms of the need for an alternate, because everybody has a busy schedule, and it's good to know that there's someone else available, because the meetings are very informative and important. I think one of the reasons why the, and I may be speaking in error, that one of the reasons why the alternates were taken off in terms of everybody's busy schedule is, as a member of the Erie County Executive Committee, I have to go to those meetings also. So I would be there if you couldn't go, or you couldn't go. I would be like the alternate, sort of automatically. Not that I don't think it's great if another person would like to be active and involved. I think that's wonderful.
Fair enough. So if that's the case, and if that chart isn't going to be published and put alongside with it, I could vote for this, of course.
And thank you, Dr. McClary, for explaining that, and also thank you for all the additional service that you do with Erie County Association of School Boards.
I still wouldn't mind if you brought it up again next month, in case people wanted to be alternates, would not want to stop someone from being an alternate.
Sure. Mrs. Carey, will you make a note for us to consider this again next month? We'll go ahead and vote on it, because Robert's rules allows us to bring back an item the following month if we vote on it.
Will do.
Mr. Lemay?
I also want to make clarification regarding, and I'm looking for it here, bear with me, I thought I had it up, and I did, voting delegate. There can only be one voting delegate, and there must be a dedicated alternate. Right now, it's, the verbiage here has got both myself and Dr. McClary down as the voting board delegate.
True. Can you tell me exactly where you're looking?
Item D, so page one, Item D.
We are going to change that so that Mr. Lemay is the board delegate?
Yes.
And Dr. McClary is the, how is that, how's that worded?
Alternate.
Board alternate.
Board delegate alternate, okay, thank you.
So to follow Robert's rules, may I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I make a motion to amend the district-wide liaison guidelines and assignments to reflect Item D, to show board delegate Sean Lemay, board alternate Susan, Dr. Susan McClary, for us to purge Item F, the Audit Committee, excuse me, Item G, the Shared Services Committee, to amend Item F, option two, to appoint the chairperson to be Mrs. Teresa Leatherbarrow. Am I missing anything? I don't think so. I think that's the end of my motion.
Alright, there's a motion on the table to amend our current motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. So, we're going to vote on the amendment first. Thank you, Dr. McClary. So on the amendment, all in favor?
We're voting the-
Just on the amendment.
The actual amendment.
Yep.
Are you opposed? Abstentions?
I just had a discussion, but I'll-
Oh, did I skip that?
Not confused, it's okay.
This is just to accept the amendment, though, correct? Okay. All in favor again, just for the official. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And I go back to the item?
Back to-
Go back to the actual item. Any continued discussion? Mrs. Beeger?
I just want to mention, part of the shift this year is number two, that we have at the top regarding the liaison guidelines, and that we're trying to do a shift of not just being a liaison, just present at PTA or PTSA meetings, but to actually represent at school events as well, which I love and I think is a great idea. Just my thought is, as we put in reports, usually we put in reports for our PTA, PTSA, is there a way that in the drop-down menu, that we might be able to designate school event, so that if we report what school events we're attending, people will know it wasn't a PTA meeting, but it was, you know, winter carnival, or concert, or something to that matter?
I do have a question in for our WITS groups to sort out, simplify it, and maybe-
Perfect.
Just to simplify.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And in the event that this motion passes, I did write a letter to send to the PTSA Council and to CC to our building administrators, explaining the spirit around this evolution of our guidelines, and I will be sharing that letter with you tomorrow after this carries. Mrs. Vansys has to edit it for me. Mr. Lemay?
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Vansys.
Just one question for Mrs. Carey. Will you be giving us, like you did last year, a spreadsheet with the dates of all of the assignments?
I can. They are, I do have them listed in Board Docs under Liaison. You paged on to Liaison Reports. They're all listed there in your content, all the dates.
Oh, did I miss it? It's just presented differently. Instead of it being a chart, they're listed by person. I said, my computer today inputted them all into my phone. That's the only reason why I know that. Any other discussion? Mr. Lemay?
Two questions here. Can we get the board minutes now sent directly to the PTSA units instead of to the liaisons?
You mean the board notes?
School notes.
Board notes, yeah, sorry. The school notes, the board notes, I am probably getting-
To the buildings?
No, I'm thinking to the PTSA units themselves, maybe to the presidents.
Yeah, I can do that.
Then that way, they can still disturb them during their meetings when board members are not present. And then my second question was, will there be, and I know this is probably open-ended, and we can do some research on our own, but will there be a list of events for the various schools to be handed out to the board members with alternate times, so we can now hit our new obligations to hit two or three alternate meetings or events?
You want to speak on that?
I had the opportunity, I'm a liaison at Country Parkway, so I've already had an opportunity to speak with the principal and the president of the PTA at Country Parkway, and even though things aren't totally set in place, but I believe, I shouldn't speak for all the schools, that I believe the schools have a nice sheet of all of their events and their PTA dates, and so I was able to get the whole year's worth of things from Country Parkway, to then be able to have a discussion of what would be good choices of things that I should attend, and which PTA meetings seem to be the most productive to go to. So, yes, getting the list, but I would be so bold as suggest that you have a meeting with the PTA president of that particular unit or the building principal.
At which point, I need that list, because I don't know who the president is on my new role.
Or are you asking for just a list of who the presidents are, or are you asking for all the events?
That's a secondary question.
Okay, I see.
No, the events is the first.
Mrs. Vansys?
So I just have a suggestion, too. So, we're still expected to go to at least three PTSA meetings at your building that you're assigned to. So having that open communication, I think, with the PTSA president, we also were just given a district calendar that for every school, for each month, lists already in the calendar the events as well, as well as the WITS page. So I think, before we ask Mrs. Carey to kind of put that together, this is just a way for us as board members to make sure that we're doing kind of our homework and really meshing with our school, and, you know, it's a piece of involvement on our end. So I think we do have this already readily available, especially with the district calendar.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, because I see our SEPSA rep in the audience, that we do have a SEPSA liaison this year on our list of assignments. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, we're going to review our board goals and self-evaluation. There is a self-evaluation summary that I did put together over the weekend. This year, we are using SUPER EVAL, which is a program that we've used previously to evaluate the superintendent. But we took it one step further this year and decided to use it, an additional tool, to do a board self-evaluation. So in this evaluation program, it's modeled after the APPR evaluation system, in that there are five standards by which we evaluated ourselves, and each standard had five indicators as well. So we actually ranked ourselves on 25 different indicators, going from highly effective all the way to in need of improvement. So, as, when we analyze the results, and the program does it nicely for us, our board evaluation came out as an effective rating. We were able to determine that among the 25 indicators, the board rated itself effective on 19 out of 25 indicators. The board average was highly effective for two of the indicators, and developing for four indicators. And all of that information is in the public access portion of Board Docs, so this is completely transparent, and any member of the community is able to access it. Anyone from the board wish to discuss the board evaluation? We did review our board goals at our June meeting, so I'm not going to take the time to go through those again. Alright, thank you. Item I, our strategic planning update. Dr. McClary, do you have anything to report for strategic planning?
No, there has not been another meeting of the group since we had the one in June, I believe. The next one is in September.
Great, thank you. Alright, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Mertzloff, would you like to give your community update?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. In terms of strategic planning, just your last item there, I wanted to make the board aware that on September 16th, our consultants who are leading the process for strategic planning will be visiting classrooms across the district to take a look at our instructional practices and what we're doing in a variety of classrooms in all 13 schools. That will be followed up on the 17th of September with a meeting with the core team to continue our planning process. We'll also be working on developing a survey that will be most likely posted sometime in October for all Williamsville Central School District community members to respond to, including our teachers, our staff members, our administrators, parents, students, and community members, to share information on their perceptions within the school district. So that should be very helpful, and that will help guide us as we begin to form our strategic intents very late in 2019 into early 2020, as we begin to formulate this important plan. I also want to let the board know that I'll be sharing some draft information on the class size report for elementary students in the district in the next week or so. We just want to verify and confirm some more information before we send that out. And then, new teacher orientation, as already mentioned, that will be taking place as will opening day, two weeks from tomorrow. It's hard to imagine that summer has passed by already, but it's been a very quick summer. So we look forward to welcoming everyone back on Tuesday, the 27th of August, at 8:00 a.m. at North High School. Those of you who are coming to the meeting, please arrive early so that you have a place to park. It can be very challenging, given all of the staff members that are coming for the opening day presentation. So that concludes my community update. Happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Item B, adopting the 2019-2020 annual agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to adopt the 2019-2020 annual agenda as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Dr. Mertzloff, do you have anything to add to the information that has been given to the board regarding our agenda for the year?
The only thing I would add is that we're more than happy to provide the board with any reports on any important items or matters. They'd like to hear reports on. So this is a bit of a working document that we can add to over time. Typically, if we do plan a report, we give ourselves a couple months' notice so that we can pull together who would be best to present, and as well as all of the specific information that'll be necessary for the report's content.
Thank you. Does anyone have an idea for a presentation for the future that they'd like to share at this time? Mr. Lemay?
Not an idea, but just an amendment, because I see my name on some of these action items here. I'm not sure that I'm the right person to be putting those together. I'm certainly willing to help out, but-
Yes, I've asked for those to be updated, and I know they're working on-
Okay.
-getting that done. Yes, I've asked for those to be updated and I know they're working on getting that done.
The district's clerk's wishful thinking.
Thank you.
Mrs. Beeger?
The, uh, only thing that I would ask for in addition, but I think it would just come naturally, is as the district is involved with strategic planning, um, I know that you'll continue to update us through the superintendent's report and our board members who are, um, going, but if there is a finalized piece or something for us to look, I would really be interested in possibly seeing a presentation about that rather than just a couple of comments, just so we can really see what the process is forming to be, but I think that will come from the work, so.
Yeah, I think also, um, we need to advertise what we're doing and we're talking about putting it on the website and on WITS so that people can see the ongoing progress that's taking place, for example, with the core team or the visits to schools and things of that nature, uh, where we're hearing feedback from all of our constituents, so that'll be ongoing for everyone to see as well.
Mrs. Vancis?
Dr. Martslove, did you want us to, um, put that in an email of what we're looking at for a presentation, or is that something you want us just to let you know at the, at the table?
No, you can, you bring it up here and we can discuss it here, I don't see any issue with.
Okay, so one, um, presentation I would love to see is where we're at with our math department, um, and our math program within, um, the schools primarily at the high school level.
Okay.
Mr. Mecca?
Um, I'd like Mr. Lemay to prepare a presentation, um, on, uh, not necessarily just special education, but, um, something like what we do to, to, um, work with our struggling learners and kind of carry us up through the process in terms of what parents experience, what the student experiences, maybe at the three different educational levels, elementary, middle school, high school, so that we have a sense of what supports are available prior to a special education referral, um, to deal with educational difficulties and maybe up on through, you know, what type of communication is going to the parents through that process, you know, just so that we have a sense of, of what parents and children experience and when, when there is academic difficulty. I, I don't know if that's too nebulous or not clear enough, but.
I'll ask Dr. Martslove to prepare it for me and.
Uh, Mrs. Beeger?
The, I see the AIS plan, approving AIS plan is included in the December tenth meeting, so I wonder if what you're talking about could be incorporated in that, not just in our AIS plan, but those specific pieces, what that looks like for students and parents along the way with the supports that we offer?
Yeah, I imagine that'd be a part of it, because AIS would be one of the supports I would imagine people would, students would receive if they run into academic difficulty, right?
I wanted to further ask the board and the superintendent if there was interest in a presentation on Readers and Writers Workshop for this coming year, um, perhaps maybe mentioning some of the other reading interventions that are taking place across the district as well. I know a lot of professional development money has been spent on Readers and Writers Workshop and, uh, implementation has been going on a few years now, so I would love to see that.
I, I would fully support that, I, I, we, we've heard so many good things about it, but I, not being an educator, have never set eyes on it, so I would love to have a formal presentation just on that program.
I believe it said.
Is it already, and there are nice given here, I thought.
That's coming, uh, October fifteenth.
Oh, I will, I will be here.
About quick action.
Good work.
You're riding my mind.
It's a great idea.
Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Carey?
I just wanted to add the, uh, it has been updated, your name is on.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mecca.
I, I was just thinking, as we, I'm a little late in my thinking, as we're talking about presentations, um, it's always nice to see musical performances, um, as we have from time to time and I think it would be great if we could see some musical performances here in the boardroom again. I don't know if that is connected or not connected to this issue, but.
Mrs. Beeger?
We had discussed this a while ago and I had brought up the idea of if we did that and opened up our meeting in that way, um, possibly rotating through the schools, so that each school would have the opportunity to highlight a musical performer or performance, so, uh, I don't know what that means as far as scheduling, but if we did go ahead incorporating some kind of performance like that in the beginning, I would love the idea of, um, rotating through the schools if we were to do so, just to highlight what we're doing in our schools.
I'd like to add that with our new liaison assignments that we just approved, it, um, asks each board member to attend two building events, so one of those events could definitely be a concert at one of the schools. And the detailed calendar has a multitude of concerts, I mean, there's concerts happening pretty much every month. Um, I know, because I've got children in music, um, so that's one, there's always wonderful opportunities and those, those concerts are open to the community for anyone to attend. Alright, I think we're ready to vote on this issue, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item C, would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution to appoint the Dignity for All Students Act, or DASSA, district and building coordinators as presented? Mr. Mecca, thank you, Mr. Lemay is the second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the universal pre-K, UPK, consultant appointment as presented? Mrs. Vancis, thank you, is there a second? Dr. McClary, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. The district discipline report for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen is included in your packet. Does anyone have a question or comment for Dr. Martslove regarding this report? Mrs. Beeger?
Um, I know that we requested this report and I found it very eye-opening and interesting for many reasons. I'm curious if this report has been shared with administrators across the board to see how, um, how their schools compare within each other, it seems like some schools may have a practice of, um, using certain categories over other categories and that kind of thing, I'm just curious if this information has been shared holistically with administrators in our district.
Not at this juncture it hasn't, but it doesn't mean it won't be in the future.
I think that would be, um, really interesting and a good practice to do, just to, for administrators' purposes of being able to talk and discuss of what those practices are like, because sometimes, you know, of course our buildings are all different and there's different issues, but I think it opens like a discussion of how, you know, you become a little island and how do you do this and how do you do this? So I think that might, um, be a really great next step for this document, because it really does, um, have some interesting discrepancies between schools and I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing, I think just the way of doing business in different schools may be different. I don't know if that's something we, um, as a district want to become more consistent with or not, but that might be a topic of discussion.
No, we, we plan, we plan to share it with everyone, you know, we, we do have seven new building administrators this year, so there's been, you know, some, uh, evolution in, uh, you know, who's in charge of our schools. Um, but with that, I think we need to, to have those kinds of discussions that can be very robust to help us all move forward in the best way possible when it comes to things like this.
I agree, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Vancis?
You know, just bringing that up, I think that that's a very valid point, because although our schools operate maybe differently, they're the same issues and sometimes when we do have new administration, they might be more reluctant to consequence, you know, they're looking at themselves, they're not tenured, it's, you know, it gets a little gray, so I think by having some true collaboration with some veteran administration, um, can help them work through, you know, the anxiety of that and making sure that we're still consistent with our, um, practices and following our policies and procedures.
That's a great point.
Dr. Martslove, I just had a quick question about vaping, um, vaping is an issue that has sort of dominated the news with, um, it being an issue all over the country and, um, you know, I noticed that the incidences on this report were pretty low. Is there anything you can tell me regarding why the, they're so low on this report for vaping?
Uh, the reason the reports of vaping are so low is because it's a very hard thing to catch a student either in possession of vaping materials or actually vaping. Um, students are way ahead of, uh, all of us, uh, when it comes to this issue and it's very challenging. We had, uh, back in November, increased the penalties for vaping when we do, uh, catch students. Um, it is, uh, unfortunately, a growing trend in our secondary schools, uh, the number of students that are, uh, choosing unfortunately to vape and the nicotine content is, is very high and it is not a, um, healthy, uh, item to be involved with for our young people.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion on the discipline report, Mr. Lemay?
So the data on the report, thank you for everybody that put this together, it's, it's, it's eye-opening. Um, I, yeah, open-ended question is, is what are we gonna do with this data now that we have it? Where do we foresee going with this, what's, what can we do with this data and where can we? Uh, obviously the answer is, is to work on improvement, but any ideas where, what, when, I, it's kind of an open-ended question, it's not just to you, Dr. Martslove, it's to everybody, so.
Well, we have our agenda planned for our administrative council meeting with all administrators, uh, for next week. Um, but after that, we will be sitting down with all of our principals and sharing the information as Mrs. Beeger mentioned earlier and having discussions about it. Um, what do you think it is that's behind this? What do you, does you think this is an accurate reflection of what's going on in your school, why or why not? We need to have some of those discussions with everyone, uh, to get everyone more on a, a common page for the future.
Okay.
I appreciate those comments, when I was educator, there was always the issue of items going un, unreported and so, you know, just me wanting to know, does this paint that accurate picture that you've described? Or are, are there incidences that are not being reported because you go to do the paperwork and then there's a new incident that you have to move on to? And I've been in those shoes as an educator where sometimes you drop the ball on writing the report because you've already gone on to putting out the next fire, so I do empathize and understand completely, um, and I appreciate the discussion. Even though this board requested that this report take place, I do feel like it's an opportunity for further growth within the district, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, would someone like to make a motion to take the revised policy, eighty-two forty-three, animals in the school from the table for the second reading and adoption, this is just to take it from the table? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Vancis? All in favor of taking it from the table for discussion? Thank you, opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously to take it from the table? And now would someone like to make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the revised policy, animals in the school for instructional purposes as presented? Thank you, Mrs. Beeger, is there a second for the motion? Dr. McClary, thank you, is there any discussion on this motion or on this policy? Mr. Lemay?
Over the last couple of days, I've become more of an expert at this policy than I thought I would ever get to know. Uh, I've only had a couple of days to start to dig into this, but I've started to realize that, uh, the policy as it's currently written, um, appears on the surface to have a lot of flaws and I, I'd like to get clarification and maybe even get some revisions to some of these, um, questions before we adopt this policy. Um, I asked some questions last month, uh, regarding some of the verbiage in here, asking for the therapy dog's owner to be an employee of the school district. I've, uh, started making some calls to some of the other districts in the area to kind of gauge what they do, how they work, uh, what their policies are and that sort of stuff. Um, I've spoken to people from Iroquois, North Tonawanda, Buffalo, who all do this currently, uh, none of them have any formal policies per se. Um, but I did talk to the SPCA, uh, the Paws for Love Program and I also spoke, um, with a trustee from the North Tonawanda who's also, uh, now, and I don't have her credentials here in front of me, I apologize, but, uh, I believe she's a educator at, uh, I think it was Niagara UB, where she's an expert in, uh, animal behaviors and that sort of stuff and she's helping write some of these policies. Anyways, um, the first questions and concerns that came up is, is why are we requesting that the dog owner be an employee of the school? And then further down in the policy, we start to talk about where, let me pull the policy up so I can directly reflect it here.
Mr. Lemay, can we let Dr. Martslove or someone speak to that first question?
Sure.
So that, your question was why, why does it have to be an employee of the school?
Correct.
As long as a dog.
The reason it should be an employee of the school is we don't want, uh, random volunteers coming in with their therapy dogs to work with our students.
Okay, so that leads to my next question where I've just became a, and I, and I'm not gonna say expert, that's the wrong word, I, but I've become more enlightened. Uh, evidently, there are only three organizations in Western New York that certify dogs. One being the SPCA Paws for Love, which is what most of the school districts use. Um, Pet Partners and Therapy Dogs International, these are the three programs. All three of these certify the dogs and everything that is in this policy, that they have their shots, that they're, the, the dogs are actually trained, that sort of stuff. Um, the SPCA pointed out something kind of interesting to me of saying, well, they're unaware of any Williamsville employees that might be, uh, a therapy dog certified through them at least. So are we limiting and kind of shooting ourselves in the foots here, requiring that the owner of said dog be this? Now, turn this around, the SPCA, um, and Pet Partners, Therapy Dogs International, all do everything that's in this policy and certify that their animals that are used for this purpose meet all of these requirements and they'll present all of this information to the board. They currently also do this for other school districts, but again, they're not employees of the school district, so is, are we making this policy overly, um, protective and, and perhaps making the pool of candidates, um, impossible to obtain?
I don't know if it would be impossible to obtain, but yeah, it is more restrictive than what you just described.
Well then, if we do keep that verbiage in there, um, going down further in this policy, number five here says that the district personnel shall not be required to provide care and food for the therapy dog, including but not limited to removing the di, animal during emergency evacuation for such events as fire alarms. And on the face, that makes perfect sense, however, because we're requiring the district employee to be the owner of said dog, now we're in violation the moment said employee brings animal onto the premise. Cause said employee would have to provide care, would have to provide potentially food or any of these requirements based on this policy.
I'm not following your current question.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that if we require the employee to be the owner of the, the therapy dog, but then down in o, option five, or item five, we're saying that, that personnel shall not be required to provide care and food, we're now in violation because technically that employee is personnel of the, of the district.
I think what that's saying is the district's personnel, so in other words, the principal of the school, the assistant principal of the school, other teachers in the school. Those folks are not required to care for the dog during an emergency or feed it or give it water.
Okay, so are we gonna make exceptions then for employees to be able to bring their dog in and out and allow them to leave the building and or, uh, the, the campus during the school day to allow for this?
But, no, that doesn't make sense to me at all, why would we make exceptions to let someone bring a dog in and then leave? They're responsible for the dog, they're the owner of the dog.
Right, but said dog can't stay on the campus for eight hours, that would be cruel and unfair punishment.
Right.
I mean, a dog typically, and, and I'm actually reiterating points that were made to me by these organizations, saying they would never recommend an animal to come on-site for more than two hours, ever.
So when the, the person has a break, they can take their dog home or to wherever it is that the dog stays at, or a friend's house, or wherever it goes.
So then we would allow an exception to allow personnel to leave the campus or leave the workday to bring that animal on and off the campus?
It doesn't say they can't leave.
I'm not, I'm not, I, but I'm, I'm.
So, if I can interject, I, I personally feel like you might be overthinking it a little bit. Um, what I remember is the background regarding this policy and that there was a child who benefited from having interaction with the dog, that this, a staff member had a dog and for some reason they came into contact and it was able to help calm the child. And so I feel as if this policy being strict is the right thing for us to do, because it's like we're sort of piloting this program to see if, if.
And respectfully, I disagree, I, I think this policy is too restrictive, I think is what the problem is here. Um, in speaking with other districts and looking with. And speaking with other districts and looking with, and speaking with Pet Partners and Therapy Dogs, just as an FYI, three organizations that certify these animals, this school district could potentially only use one based on this policy as it's currently written because these other two organizations will not allow employees to ever use their own personal therapy dogs for any session, for any work because of the stress that it's, and, and I'm gonna get this wrong, but because of the stress to the animal and the con- and, eh, you know, I, I get gray on this, but it was something that along the lines of the stress of the animal, they do not allow employees to use their own personal therapy dogs. They must use separate approved therapy dogs.
I respect your thoughts and your work in seeking to become an expert on therapy dogs, I appreciate that. I want to see if anyone else has a comment on this, otherwise I'd like to bring it to a vote. Mrs. Beeger?
Have we seen any policies in any other school districts regarding therapy dogs? If there are districts that use, I don't remember any of the names, Paws of Love or whatever it was called.
Yep.
And the only reason I ask is because I love that this is in here and I just wanna make sure that we're getting it right. I think we're trying to take baby steps and I think that it does say that a dog that comes in has to be trained and certified or registered to provide emotional support for students. So I don't think we're opening up the door for teachers to just bring their dogs to work. I think that it, it has to be a therapy dog that's certified. And, and perhaps we start here in these small steps and then by approving this, we have that piece. And then we can continue to venture forward and see how other districts do it. I just don't think there's any harm in the way that it's written right now. I think it's just a small step towards possibly opening the door to then working with more organizations. I don't think it hinders that from happening eventually. I think it's just a small step, that, that's how I read it.
Mrs. Beeger, to answer your question, we didn't really compare it to other districts' policies, but we did legally vet this thoroughly with legal counsel to make sure that it was where it needed to be to protect the district and also to protect, most importantly, students. There could be students that have allergies or other items and reasons why they can't be around a therapy dog, for example. And we just need to be careful of all that as we go through. So could there be some changes to the policy down the road? Absolutely. But we really wanna get this off the ground for the new school year and see how it works and what goes well and where there's some areas that we could possibly tinker with and, and change for the future so that kids can be able to have, begin to have this experience in their schools.
That makes sense to me and so that, that's just why I wanted to ask of, of the process. I, I think that as it stands, I don't think it hinders from where you wanna go with this, but I also understand the timeliness of it, that if we were to, say, make an amendment to put a hold on this and look further, then this wouldn't be readily available opportunity for kids at the beginning of the school year.
I don't believe it's going to be, though.
Mrs. Van Sis?
I would just like to say, I, I understand what Sean is saying, but I think what trumps that at this time is this is a new policy and we want to start slowly and make sure that we are being mindful and keeping all children safe. Because on the opposite side, when you think of a therapy dog, we're not talking about a therapy dog that's coming into the school and going into all the classrooms. A therapy dog is going to be used for specific reasons such as maybe during a counseling session. For specific students, however, the exposure that other students would, would, would have, such as Dr. Marslov said, with allergies, it opens up a realm of other situations that could present harm. So I am very comfortable with the way it is now, making sure that we are protecting everyone, that this is a prosperous policy. And then if we need to, we come back, we look at it and maybe evolve with it and maybe we can branch out and incorporate more.
Mr. Mekka?
I, I share Sean's concerns, but see the reality, and I appreciate all the work you did, Sean. It seems like you did, Mr. Lemay, it seems like you did a lot of, a lot of background research. I'd like to, I, I suppose I, I'll support it as I imagine Mr. Lemay will too, even despite the reservations. But hopefully, over time, we can expand the policy to be more inclusive or as needed.
I see this as another example of our district sort of leading the way. The fact that, that a similar policy doesn't seem to exist in neighboring districts to me provides us with an opportunity to be innovative and leaders. Alright, seeing no more discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Right, item thirteen, finance. Would someone like to make a motion, please, to approve the Chinese Club of Western New York BCS lease agreement as presented? Mrs. Van Sis, thank you, second, Mr. Mekka, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Is there a motion, please, to approve the Amherst Youth Basketball Lease Agreement as presented? Dr. McClary, thank you, and second, Mr. Lemay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thirteen C, would someone like to make a motion to approve the non-resident tuition rates as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you, Mr. Lemay, second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school tax warrant. Would someone please like to make a motion to approve the school tax warrant as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you, Mrs. Beeger has a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Does anyone have any liaison reports? If so, please send them to Mrs. Carey. The list of meeting docs, uh, sorry, meeting dates, which we spoke about briefly during our liaison item, is available in Board Docs, they're listed a little differently than they have been in the past. But thank you, Mrs. Carey, for doing that. Please let the board know if you're unable to attend a meeting that you've committed to so that another board member is able to cover for you. The PTA, PTSA president list will be sent out to the board as soon as Mrs. Carey receives all of that information. And those contacts will be sent out and entered in Board Docs. Item fifteen, are there any legislative matters that anyone wishes to discuss? Thank you. Going on to curriculum, the approval of the professional development plan. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the professional development plan as presented? Dr. McClary, thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Lemay, is there any discussion? Mrs. Beeger?
I just wanna comment on this, as different documents and plans are shared with us, this continues to be one of what I think is most impressive and something that I think our community would be really happy to see, the amount of professional development that is available. This plan explains, you know, how different parties and different groups in our district acquire professional development, some of it, you know, through staff development days and things like that. But there's so much choice and so many opportunities for different aspects of education. It's just, seems like the sky's the limit and, and we have such a pool of talent that come and work with educators and, and other parties in our district. So I just wanna comment on how impressive this plan continues to be. I really enjoyed looking through it. Thanks.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. There are no personnel matters to discuss.
Bless you.
Bless you. And, Dr. Marslov, will you give us our facility improvement plan, please?
I'd love to. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Matorski, who will share with you the facilities improvement plan. Mr. Matorski?
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. There's not a lot to share at this meeting because we don't have any construction happening this summer. I can, they'll update everyone on the fact that our plans for the music project were submitted at the very beginning of July. And fortunately, we, it looks like the Department of Education may be reviewing them earlier than planned. Initially, we were looking for an approval in January or February. It looks like we will be having that reviewed sometime this fall. And so that would be very good for us to get our bids out earlier in the fall. So that's the great, the best update for now.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding facility updates? I have a one question regarding the parking lots. I drive through Heim, the Heim campus a lot and the barriers keep moving around the parking lots and I'm trying to like anticipate what's going on, I can't figure it out.
When we did the, the overlayment there this summer, I was meeting with both principals and there was a request to add a second speed bump. So there's a second se- speed bump that's been added on the, the side closer to the development, not the Heim roadside. So that was put in, but the other one is in the same location. So we're gonna have two now to try and slow down the traffic that goes through there during the school day.
I saw that brick was taken out, is the brick getting put back in?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, it'll look nice with the brick. Alright, thank you. Anyone else have any questions regarding facility improvements? Thank you. Right, District Safety Plan Public Hearing. We will now conduct our District Safety Plan Public Hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board regarding our District Safety Plan should go to the podium and sign in, please, at this time. Does anyone in the audience wish to talk about our District Safety Plan? Is there anyone back there? I can't see. Nope? We will now vote to approve it. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to adopt the District Safety Plan that as presented in our packet? Mr. Lemay, thank you, Mrs. Van Sis is our second, thank you. Is there any discussion on the District Safety Plan? Mr. Mekka?
So this was recently a, a hot issue because comptroller Denapoli reviewed, I think it was seventeen school districts and two charter schools' safety plans. And he found all of them lacking, or his people, whoever did the review, found all of them lacking. So I reviewed that document put out by the comptroller's office and compared it to our document. And I, I have some questions about things that I see might not match up well if we were to be reviewed. So, number one, the governing boards, which is us, must hold a thirty-day public comment period prior to the adoption of a safety plan. And I don't require, remember us doing that prior, prior to this point. This is just, you know, a, a comment period right now, right?
We do that every year, that's why we present it tonight and then give people until the next board meeting is the time to make a comment on it before we approve it.
It has to be approved by September first, though.
There's lots of things for state education department that are due September first that go in October, November.
Okay, so that's not a thirty-day comment period, though?
I'm confused, we, we are voting to adopt it tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so there's not been a thirty-day comment period for, for the public, right?
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't present this to the public at our last meeting, so no.
Okay, so that, that's one of the, in, in the document, it says, "All, all governing boards must adopt a safety plan annually by September first after holding a thirty-day public comment period and a public hearing." So we're doing the public hearing, but we're not doing the thirty-eight comment. So that's, that's one thing.
Pause for one second, Mr. Mekka?
Yeah.
Dr. Marslov, is this safety plan available anywhere on the district's website?
Uh, normally is, yeah.
So they could theoretically have three hundred and sixty-five days to comment in the year on this plan? It's public?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I understand that the District Safety Plan has to be approved by the State Education Department. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we know what month that approval takes place?
By the State Ed?
Right.
I'm not sure, any thoughts?
I believe normally when we submit it, they provide us the approval at that point in time. It's, it's, I think like Dr. Marslov mentioned, it's a submission. You may hear about it at a later point, but it's, it's usually approved within a thirty-day period.
So we would approve it tonight and then it would be sent to the state for approval? Is that the way it would work?
Yes.
And I, I reviewed it, but from your perspective, is there anything that's a major difference from this year's plan to last year's plan? Or like this new one that we're being asked to approve tonight?
No, I don't think so.
I'm just questioning why then if last year's plan had already been approved by the commissioner, and if it was approved by the commissioner, why would the, you said Commissioner Denapoli?
Yeah, not Commissioner, but the comptroller.
Comptroller. Why, like what, what standards does he have that are not in alignment with the Commissioner of Education? And why aren't they working that out together instead of bringing it to?
Right.
Us as making it our mass?
There are something like seventeen or twenty-one standards in the document and they're pretty objective. So for example, some of the ones that I felt we were lacking on, and I kind of looked at the ones that most districts didn't do well on, figuring that we probably hit all the bases of the ones that most districts are doing well on. There, there's a requirement that we have policies and procedures for responding to acts of violence by student teachers or other school personnel and visitors to the school, including consideration of zero tolerance policies for school violence. So we have to have in our document some consideration of zero tolerance policies for school violence. We don't, we don't seem to have that, at least as far as I could tell. So I just wanted to point that out. We have policies and procedures for responding to acts of violence.
Mr. Mekka, excuse me for a second, do you mind telling me what a zero tolerance policy for access to school violence would be?
I don't know, but it's not addressed in our policy and.
Okay. So if a kid punches another kid, do we have zero tolerance for that?
I think we should have zero tolerance for that, but I, I don't know what that means in, in practical purposes.
Right. The audience defines zero tolerance as there's some strong action by the school, I would think.
Right.
So for violent activities, like you bring a weapon to school.
Right.
You can be put out of school for a year.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
But for something else, that's less than that, if you will, in the whole realm or progression of student violence, it might not be that, but are they both zero tolerance?
Yeah.
Probably not.
I, I guess my point on that, because I, I'm not even a supporter of a zero tolerance policy, but we have to have considered it. And, and it doesn't appear that we did consider it in our policy.
But what is it? Consider what? Should we kick kids out of school if they punch another kid? Should we kick kids out of school if they, you know, threaten to blow up the school? I mean, there's a whole realm of behaviors.
Yeah.
Which ones do you have zero tolerance for, if any? And which ones do you not?
I, I get you, I'm just saying in ter- in terms of he, he found the, the comptroller, for whatever that means, because New York State, when we submit to them, they are also a determiner of whether or not we did it correctly. The comptroller took it upon himself, I think upon the guidance of the state, to review these seventeen school districts and two charter schools and found all of them lacking. He, I think he would have found ours lacking as well.
The comptroller, when they audit any school district for any purpose, will find things that are lacking. It's called job security for them?
Yeah.
That's just what will happen.
Yeah.
If they say you don't have a zero tolerance policy for school violence, then, okay, then at one point I'll ask them to define that and we'll add it to it and make it better. But I don't think going through this A to Z and trying to find the spots where the district could maybe address it differently or better is really gonna be that helpful to having a safe and secure school. I mean, if you have a threat to a school, you're gonna do one of, you know, a few things. You're gonna lock down or you're gonna evacuate. There's not really too much else, perhaps shelter in place, but there's not really too much else to do in response. Right? Right?
So, so, I mean, he didn't choose our school district to review, which is good, I guess. But I, I just looked at it and said, let me read this report and see what his recommendations are. And the strong recommendations were you have to have a thirty day period for public comment, which I noticed we didn't have. And I, I'm bringing these things up for us to consider, I guess. So the other one is that zero tolerance poli- policy. And I'll just point out the, the other one, I think. There's a requirement that we have policies and procedures for the dissemination of informative materials regarding the early detection of potentially violent behaviors, including but not limited to the identification of family, community, and environmental factors to teachers, administrators, and parents, and other persons in parental relations, to students of the school district or board, students and other persons deemed appropriate to receive such information. So in my review of the safety plan, I, I don't see anything about us having an early detection system for students that could be potentially violent. So.
What kinds of early detection systems would you cite as examples that we could consider including?
They're, they're saying that you should inform others of potential to be, to be violent of students that have community or environmental factors that are prone to violence, I guess. I, I don't know what those are. I'm just pointing out we don't have them. And Denapoli, the Controller thinks we should have them.
Okay.
If I could speak, Mr. Mecca, I, I appreciate all the work that you did on this. I personally would like to bring it to a vote, because if we don't, we will, we will have no safety plan at the start of the school year. I think a safety plan, even if it is found down the line to have some violations, would be repairable and better than nothing at all.
I know, that's why it leaves me in a hard position, too. Like I, I would like to kick this back for more work, but we don't really have time to do that because it has to be approved by September first, right? So I'll vote for it for that reason, but I, I don't think. And I think a lot of it's great, by the way, and a lot of it is word for word what was in Denapoli's report. But I, it does seem that we're a little deficient.
I also real- remember us having, and I'm not sure if it's the same thing, but we've had a lot of involvement and cooperation with Amherst Police Department, who I'm sure has reviewed our safety plans as part of the audit process that they did with us. So I personally feel comfortable knowing that APD was involved and had eyes on our safety plan and that our plan has been continually approved by the state of New York.
It's also been reviewed by officials at BOSI's who are operating as part of the New York State Education Department to vet it, to review it, to see, is this good? Is it not good? Does it need more? Does it need less? So I'm kind of at a loss, you know? If you want to wait thirty days, we can wait thirty days and send it in after September first once we, once the board conceivably would approve it at the September meeting. If you want us to add zero tolerance policies in there, we can, we can look at doing that. Whatever the board thinks makes the most sense going forward, we're more than willing to do.
Mrs. Beeger?
Two things. One, in, in response to the zero policy, I remember having a lengthy conversation about response to certain situations when we looked at the Code of Conduct in the district and talking about, do we have a zero policy? But there's different infractions and depending on if the student was involved in something else or things like that. And that was one of the reasons why we didn't just have cut and dry, you do this, this is your, because it may be more severe and, and just to say punching, but what this was versus this. So that was one of the reasons why I remember at that time being okay with, for lack of a better term, no zero policy, because you, you want to really examine the situation for what it is and the severity.
Just for clarity, you're thinking zero tolerance, correct?
Tolerance, yes, thank you. In response to what you said about us not having anything in place when there's violent behavior, we've seen several presentations regarding issues like that. And right here in the Safety Plan Section 5000 is Prevention and Intervention Strategies. And it talks at length really about not just our partnership with the APD, but talking about Youth Wellness Council, making connections to others, having, providing students with experiences, support, helping with solid coping resistance skills, research, you know, all the assets, things like this. There's a lot here. But I, I don't think that we are lacking that piece. And I think that it's here in the plan, which is perhaps why, I, I know this has been vetted before, but I, I'm seeing that part here.
If I can just respond to that, I, I didn't say that we don't have ways of dealing with potent, students that could be potentially violent.
Yeah.
What I, what I said was there's a requirement that we have policies and procedures for the dissemination of informative materials regarding early detection of potentially violent behaviors.
It's right here, proving communication among students, staff, and reporting of potentially violent incidents. And then there's several bullets in, in that piece in Section 5000.
It, it could be that we had it then.
Mrs. Van Sis?
Just two comments on both of those. So zero tolerance, I find it actually a little, and I could be wrong for saying this, but the Controller wants to criticize for not having a zero tolerance policy, because as soon as a district puts in a zero tolerance poli- tolerance policy and you treat everyone the exact same and give them the same consequence, whether irregardless of what they did, the state's coming back at you and they're going to be criticizing you for your suspensions and so on and so forth. So districts are being pulled away from zero tolerance and we have education law. And the education law clearly deciphers what you should be doing. And there are three extreme cases when you take it to a different level. So that's already laid out for school districts and we have our legal to help us with that. So I think in our district and many districts, it is clearly defined. And for the early detection piece, I think Williamsville clearly has that through all of the PD that they offer. Teachers, counselors, psychologists, they are the first people to detect and they report. They have a duty to report and then we follow through. So again, I feel that we do have early detection. It might not be a hundred percent, because even those own parents aren't often able to detect. But we definitely, I think the district as a whole is given development and ways, strategies to detect students and to report it and make sure that all students are safe, including that individual.
If I, if I can just say one more thing and I'll be done with it, because I know you're getting tired of me. My only point is, is that I don't think we meet the standards that set up by Denapoli, for whatever that matters, the Controller. There's just one more I want to make you aware of that I think we're deficient in, and then I'm done. I mean, I'll vote for it, because we have to have a plan in place by September first. And I think we should have some plan as opposed to a plan that might not be pass muster with the Controller. And I just wanted to make you all aware of it. I'm not the person that supports these ideas or views or, you know, zero tolerance policies. I'm just saying we have to have considered zero tolerance policy and it doesn't seem like we've done that. You know, I'm, I'm not the one trying to tell you what we should be doing here, except maybe we want to consider the fact that we wouldn't have passed this test either. There's a requirement that we have the, that the designation of the superintendent or superintendent's designee is the District Chief Emergency Officer, whose duties shall include but not be limited to, and there's a whole bunch of duties that the chief, the District Chief Emergency Officer has to, has to own. We have identified a District Chief Emergency Officer, but we don't have that person owning all of those duties as spelled out by Denapoli. So I'm just, don't, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just telling you, I don't think that our plan would meet muster with Denapoli, for what that's worth.
Mr. Lemay?
And on your first comment about the thirty day policy, you're right, it is in here. It's black and white. And you're right, I, even though, and I, I commented and said, you know, it's posted three hundred and sixty-five days for comment. If, if it's spelling out here that we have to do this, then that means technically we should be presenting this in July. And I think for next year, we should make a note of that, so that that way, at least on that point specifically next year, we're within the code as it's spelled.
I think we should clean up whatever we can clean up as to the best of our ability, and that's my point. You know, I'm not trying to offend anybody, not trying to tell anybody that did a bad job. I'm just saying I think there are procedural errors here and that's one of them. And why not fix them?
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments and discussion on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Item twenty is our special needs and student activities. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the universal pre-kindergarten UPK consultant as presented?
Mrs. Beeger, pardon me. My apologies. I believe it's a duplicate.
Oh, because we did that already.
Under the attendance report.
Yeah.
Where else is that?
It wasn't lining up with my computer. We absolutely approve that. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under Committee of the Whole?
I think I do, but I have to pull my notes up, sorry.
Is there any correspondence anyone wishes to discuss? Oh, yes.
Committee of the Whole.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said.
No, I said I, I do, but I had to pull up my notes.
I thought you said you didn't want to do it. I'm sorry.
Sorry. So the legislation has moved forward, which allows cameras on school buses to catch violators of the school bus stop signs and lights when people pass a school bus illegally. Just wondering where we are all with this as board members, as a district. Are we interested in this? How do we proceed?
It's a new item, so I, I would personally like to have some time to think about it. Mr. Lemay, did you have your hand up?
I did. I, I'm certainly interested in it, but I prefer the discussion, but not looking to use district funds to support it.
I, I had heard from Dr. Martsov in an informal discussion on this that the town of Amherst would be the one that would move this forward anyway. Who would be on the hook financially for it, do you think, if, if this did move forward?
Well, our understanding is the cameras are supposed to be provided for buses. However, the, when the cameras take pictures of people passing buses and there's a, there's a fine assessed to that person's vehicle, those dollars go to a certain private company after a small amount is given to the municipality, i.e. the Amherst Police. And we're not even part of that equation. That's my understanding. Mr. Maturski, would you concur?
Hundred percent correct.
Questions. People are thinking. Mrs. Beeger, I thought you had it first.
That's interesting. I guess I'd like to hear more about this as well. I've heard concerned parents talk about this and I actually witnessed on my own street a car blowing by a school bus as kids were going across the street. And it was horrible and parent, and we all saw it down the street. And when I saw this legislation take place, or, you know, this was in the news, I didn't realize that component of it. So I, I'm interested in learning more as far as the implications to the school district, because I thought that, you know, it sounds neat and pretty that this passed and this will happen. But I guess I'm interested in learning more. So I'm glad that you brought it up, Mr. Mecca.
I'd like to ask a follow-up question to Dr. Martsov, and I guess if you can't answer it, please don't. But in, in this particular case with school bus cameras, you said the money flowed through some company. If there's a fine, is this, is this all traffic law or is this just with this particular legislation?
Just this item. And there are specific companies that sort of have a possibility of being involved. And I will not mention to you who any of the potential owners or managers of those companies are.
Mr. Lemay?
It's interesting, and I had to dig to, to, to look this up real quick. The law conference we were at last week actually hit on this subject. I'm going to give you the summary, but there is a two paragraph that I'm not going to get into depth on. But the summary, it's Law A four nine five zero dash B. It authorizes boards of education to adopt a resolution to enter an agreement with municipality for installation and use of stop armed cameras. Total cost to be borne by municipality, so not sure how attractive this would be to schools. And the district cannot access any images and must forward to the municipality. The seventy-five page narrative that I did include with my report for, for that law conference does get into this on page sixty-five. There is two paragraphs that write up in depth. And I, I'm just skimming it very quickly, but I think most of your questions may be answered right there.
Thanks.
Thank you for bringing this issue up. Dr. McCleary whispered to me, it's the law. And I hadn't even realized that that was a new law that had gone through. I wasn't able to attend that conference. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. Any other items for Committee of the Whole? Thank you. Is there any correspondence that anyone wants to discuss? Alright, we will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium and sign in please at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to?
I do have the sheet here from before, so I will just transfer.
Okay.
The information over.
Alright, thank you. I'm not going to go into it again, but I do have a, a question, because it's such a time sensitive situation. Since the school requires the Athletic Blue Paper to be in, like tomorrow, do I send that into the nurse's office? Will she even accept it? I don't know what to do with it. Will she be able to cheer? Will she not be able to cheer? I am not sure what to do with that information.
Well, technically not allowed to answer your question. It's supposed to be for public comment and for us to listen and hear your concern. I would recommend that you call the Athletic Office tomorrow morning and set an appointment to bring that blue form to East High School to give it to the nurse. So that you could do that tomorrow. Do not send it in randomly.
No, I would bring it in to North High School, but.
Not to North, not to North High School, no. It goes to East. The nurses who are overseeing the athletic eligibility program are stationed at East, they're set up at East, they're accepting these forms. If it's a student for modified sports, they then take the form and send it to their coach. If it's for JV or varsity, they give you a portion of that blue form. And that's the child's ticket for the first practice. Okay?
Alright.
Good luck.
They went to North last year.
It was at North last year. You're correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I want to talk about the same topic again. I don't know what is the solution. You guys are going to be working on it. If you guys are not going to be working on it, please let me know so that I can find a solution on my own. Because I don't see any representation here for me or people like me. And the next time I'm going to become more certain individual topics where things have happened, which this committee, the school board, has to make some kind of a rules change. Because like California, they brought about a rule where even non-citizens can vote for the school board elections.
That's not up to the school board.
Yes. If the school board cannot do, be, cannot find somebody to be elected, at least they can be selected. Somebody from the parents.
That's not up to the school board either.
Then who is responsible for that, making the rules?
It's state law. Who can run for school board?
State law. But what about appointing a certain person from the parents? I'm not talking about me.
The only time that comes into play is if a school board member were to resign partway through the term and the rest of the school board met together and decided that they would like to run a process to figure out who would replace that person for the remainder of his or her term.
How about getting a non-voting member on the school board? Three non-voting members who do not have any say, who can give their input at every board meeting, sitting on the other side, not here. Why can't the school board think about it, talk about it, where they can have three non-voting members? Somebody who can give their input to the board.
Again, I'm not supposed to be responding to you, but why three? Why not two? Why not one? Why not six? Why not ten?
I'm just coming up. I'll tell you why three. Just like every year, three members stand for election, so you can replace one member every three years. Does that make any sense? Like just three members, out of the nine members of the board, three are being replaced. I mean, sorry, not replaced, but standing for election every year. In the same format, you can have three non-voting members.
You would need a, you would need a community vote to vote for a change like that.
So let's do it for a community vote, where we can put in a proposal like that, where we'll have three non-voting members who are the parents of the communities which are not represented in this board. Like I said, I went through the statistics. If I'm not wrong, there are nine thousand nine hundred students in this, in this Williamsville School District. Seventy-five percent is Caucasian. Twelve percent is Asian. And I spoke to a lot of parents. Sorry, I was lucky enough to become a citizen here, because I joined the army. But there are many other parents who kids are in elementary schools, kids are in high school, but they are not citizens. So my, my understanding is, I understand about the voting part, okay, we don't want to change the voting part. But we can have some, three people who are going to give their input. Like I said, the person who was doing testing on my daughter- Like I said, the person who was doing testing on my daughter didn't even know that how kids from Indian communities eat. He was comparing to eating using a fork and a knife. How many of them know that Indian parents like to feed their kids? Or when you go to an Indian restaurant, you don't see so many people eating with a fork and knife. There are other incidents which I'm going to get to the board next time, once it's not resolved. But what I'm saying is, three members, non-voting, who are only going to give their input. What's wrong in that? We are not, they're not going to be paid, they're not going to be, okay, they'll bring their own water bottles here to drink.
But as it stands currently, any person from the community can come and address the board on any issue at any meeting.
Sir, today I'm here, but I never got a copy of th- those things. First thing is, look, there are so many people who want to volunteer their time. I'm sorry. I'm done, if I'm done, I'm done.
Okay.
I'll come back next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I just make a quick comment, please?
Yes, of course.
Can I, um, to the member of the community here, may I, I'm not asking you to come back to the podium, but, but I, I do want to suggest that maybe the community forums that we have might be a more appropriate area to address the board with this concern, because the community forums is where we can actually sit down in a three-hour pan, uh, span and have a complete two-way dialogue with you and kind of hash out ideas of change, suggestions, improvements, things that we do great, things that we can do better. And that's, and we have two of those scheduled that we voted on tonight. One coming, and I don't have the list right here in front of me, but I want to say, I think the first one was
November.
November. Thank you. And, and it's, 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 that's probably more the venue for allowing you to come and have that discussion where we can actually give you some answers and have a two-way dialogue with you on that issue. Okay? Thank you.
I have one more question, sir, um, and if you choose not to say it publicly, you've asked that we keep you informed and, you know, send you maybe thoughts and information. Um, could you please, if you want to do it as an email or publicly, you need to give us either an address or an email.
It's R as in Romeo.
This is an email?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Ready, I have your email. I will pass it along.
Alright.
She has it.
Thank you.
I'm just looking to make some changes.
If, if I can say too, uh, Mr. Lemay's point was a great point about the community forums. Um, we have had different groups of either, uh, religious groups or groups of a certain ethnic background or culture approach us in those community forums to advocate for things that they felt were important, and I think it was well-received in that venue.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for second public expression?
Right, would someone like to make a motion to recess the regular board meeting to conduct the goal-setting workshop, work session at this time? Um, Mrs. Van Cis, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Alright. We are now going to start our goal-setting process. Um, we're gonna take a brief recess just so that we can squeeze in a quick bathroom break, and then we will come back and begin this, um, goal-setting workshop.
Five minutes, six minutes?
Five-minute recess. We'll do a turn-off recess and call our goal-setting work session back into session. Mr. Martzloff, would you begin with our district goals, please?
Sure.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah, as you see above, it is the board goals, not the district goals. But I'll scroll down, uh, with, uh, what our goals are supposed to be for two thousand and nineteen twenty. But as I scroll down, I did not run across...
Uh, Dr. Martzoff, if you go to adopt two thousand nineteen twenty district goals, those are in there.
On the regular section.
As an attachment.
If you get out of that one, right?
Am I in the wrong?
Yeah.
You want twenty-six B.
Oh, twenty-six B.
Yeah, that one.
We're not voting if
No, we're not voting, but
Correct.
Right, but
Twenty-six B is where the attachment for the district goal summary is.
Okay, here it is. I was, uh, trying to open the, in the wrong place. So, now that we have it, um, correct, um, the first goal for our district, of course, is to engage with our community stakeholders on a long-term strategic planning process that's going to be based on what's best for our students at all levels of the school district. And we are actively engaged in that process already. Um, in the area of instruction, it's already been mentioned, uh, this evening at the board table about readers and writers workshop as an integral component of literacy instruction, and we'll be presenting on that in October. Uh, looking at the instructional coaching model and the possibility of expanding that in the future. And then, as we always are looking to do, explore and implement additional opportunities for students with an emphasis on creativity, discovery, career and community connections, advanced and college-level experiences. So for example, we had sixty students this summer who took college-level courses for free at Damon College based on our new, uh, agreement with them. And then we want to further, uh, examine and refine practices and protocols regarding homework, grading, and reporting progress. Um, that's probably what Dr. Baylen, about a ten- or twelve-year goal, that will, uh, uh, take to review that, but that is always a challenge, because you run into an individual's, um, view of how that should work with the department's view, uh, with the school's view, with the parents' view. So that can be a delicate conversation that, uh, will take some time. In the area of exceptional education, we're gonna continue to expand social-emotional learning and mindfulness practices, um, and, uh, expand that across the district as well as addressing social-emotional, mental health, and wellness efforts uh, through effective programming, uh, supports. Um, we're going to continue to enhance health services and best practices for K-12 interventions. Uh, one of the areas there is with, uh, for example, uh, vaccinations that are gonna be required for all students, uh, this September. We're going to review our security audits and implement procedures as needed. Uh, our goal, one of our goals is to come up with a draft plan for our community to vote on in May of two thousand twenty, uh, and one of, uh, the main parts of that plan would be to enhance, uh, physical security of all of our schools. Uh, we're gonna continue to monitor, uh, district programming and classes to ensure they are most effective and efficient with increased integration, uh, to make sure that needs of students are being met, which we will also have a presentation on in December. The area of technology, we're going to, again, review our one-to-one mobile device program at the middle school level and take a look at the technology department's organizational structure. There may be some reconfiguring, uh, that is needed there, given, uh, potential changes in our one-to-one technology program. Um, in the area of human resources, we're gonna revise, uh, the process for hiring and evaluating annual athletic coaching positions. Um, and we're also gonna change, uh, some of our approaches to how we do things with some of our support staff members, uh, across the district. And then in non-instructional support operations, uh, again, we're gonna coordinate, uh, the implementation of the two thousand eighteen Music Improvement Capital Project that was approved by our voters in December, finalize, uh, plans for a new potential project for vote in May of two thousand twenty, and then monitor the school's money collection requests to parents and students throughout the school year to make sure they're in compliance with our new procedures. And we've already shared those procedures with the principals, we've given them examples, and that information will be shared publicly, uh, with all parents and teachers at the start of the school year. Any questions on the district goals?
Mr. Mecca?
I, I think they were awesome. Thank you. I think they were very, I compared them to last year's goals and, you know, everything, uh, all the focuses have been shifted a little bit in areas of need, and I thought it was really, um, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mecca.
Mrs. Bieger?
I feel like these goals are so reflective of many conversations that we've had throughout the year. It was really nice to see even things that are a little more delicate, like homework or grading. Um, we've heard things about, we've heard public comments about that. Uh, there's just so much here. The one-to-one mobile device came up. Um, things that, there may be some debate about. I love that the district is choosing to make goals around these areas, um, just to do the best we can for our students. So thank you to the district for their really careful attention to, um, what we as a board, I think, have been hearing from the community. Thank you.
Mrs. Van Cis?
I would just like to touch upon that, too. I was very, very impressed with, um, I guess the specifics that were added in, which shows the conversations that we're listening to, not just us at the board table and the leadership team and Dr. Martzloff, but families. So a couple underlying themes that we saw in this is family involvement, and the stakeholder feedback is part of this district, um, goal, which is awesome. So the supports, you know, drawing out supports to assist our struggling learners such as the RTI and the AIS is awesome to see. And then, of course, the safety efforts and the school climate initiatives, I think that was outstanding. So, um, after I read this, I was very, very impressed and very pleased. So thank you for all the work with this.
Thank you.
I'm reminded of the retreat that we attended in the spring regarding goal-setting, and I am thankful that our assistant superintendents were able to join us for that retreat which centered on goals, on goal-setting. Um, when I read these goals, it just makes me feel like a sense of collaboration that went into these goals. It really makes them unique and just a much higher quality than pa- in the past. So I'm very thankful and appreciative.
I just have to say thank you to the assistant superintendents for their great work on these. Uh, Dr. McKenna, Mr. Matusky, Dr. Baylen, uh, Mr. Scanzul, he can't hear us all the way from his European vacation, but, so, uh, played a key role in developing, uh, some of these goals. So you guys did a great job, as always, and we're very appreciative.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a look at our board goals, which are projected on the screen in front of us. Um, there's been opportunities for board members to, uh, submit, um, or make recommendations or edits or changes. My understanding is edits are in red on the screen. So, we'll take one at a time and just go through them. At the top, you'll see the, um, mission. I suggested in an edit of adding some words which were a part of the, um, work of the board that was part of last month's approval. So where it says, um, that the mission of the Board of Education is to enable the district to realize its mission as articulated in the strategic plan and the words that come after that. That's co- copy and pasted from the work of the board that we approved during our August, um, meeting. So our first goal is to foster and enhance relationships while continuing to improve communication with students, families, and community stakeholders. There is a suggestion to add the word buildings after the first, in the first activity. With just what's on the screen right there, does anyone have any changes that they'd like to make? Dr. McCleary?
I'm just glad to see that buildings is up there. That was one of the areas that I had requested that we look at to show that we're getting involved with the building and not just the PTA. So I, I think just adding that one word kind of, um, brings it under the umbrella that will be quite workable for all of us.
Very good. Mrs. Bieger?
I love the, uh, up at the very top, um, the part of the board as the elected voice of the community guides the district by establishing, I think that's perfect. The only question I have is about that first sentence, um, where we say, "Enable the district to realize its mission is articulated in the strategic plan." I'm not sure if that, uh, maybe is articulated in district goals. Um, I'm not sure if the strategic plan is complete yet, and so I just wonder if we're considering these are nineteen twenty goals, if that's appropriate to have there yet. Like, I think that's coming.
I think it's referring to the current strategic planning, because we do have, we do approve planning each year. So that's my understanding of that.
I guess I, I'm wondering, thinking about our retreat, if our board goals are to support what we just looked at as the district goals. And, and perhaps I'm incorrect in that, and then we would say the district's mission, because there's also the mission.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering if that's a place where we would be supporting the, or at least referring to district goals and not just the mission or strategic plan.
Can you recommend, um, a change of wording, because we have someone that can type it in for us?
Sure, but let me kind of speak out loud before we type, because I don't want to create like an editing mess. The mission of the Board of Education is, um, I, I guess I just think that second part is so strong, I'm wondering if we need that. Like, "The board, as elected voice of the community, guides the district by establishing policy and allocating resources consistent with district goals." Like, I'm just wondering if that is enough, if we need that.
Are you saying delete the first portion and have it start with?
"The board, as elected voice of the community, guides the district by establishing policy and allocating resources consistent with district mission and goals." Like, I guess that's, I thought that second statement was so strong. I don't know if we need the first sentence.
Does everyone see how it would read? It's highlighted perfectly. You would say, "The mission of the Board of Education, as the elected voice of the, of the community, guides the district by establishing policy and allocating resources consistent with that mission."
And possibly saying, "Consistent with the district mission and belief statement," as well as district goals. I'm just leaving it as that, because those are the two pieces that the district is
Just slow down what you said at the very end.
Yes, so we would start with the board.
Starting with the board in, in red, not the mission of the board.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep. So we could deli- delete the part that's in black, that whole first line.
And go, and just the first sentence there, "Ending strategic plan."
Yes, right there. Yep.
Um, and then, "Consistent with" the district's
Goals and mission.
Yeah, the district's mission and belief statements. Mission and belief statements.
Not the goals?
About just mit- with, "Consistent with the district's mission"
Belief statements
And beliefs.
Those district goals.
Mission and beliefs.
That's how it's, that's how it's written in the document.
I see, okay.
I, I'm just looking at the district documents, mission statement, belief statement, district goals.
Okay.
So
Perfect.
And it kind of aligns with the work that the district has done, and that's "We then guide by establishing policy and allocating resources to support the mission and belief statements as well as their, just, the district goals." Does that make sense to everyone? I, I don't mean to
Um...
bunk what we have.
Sure, that's, that's good.
I just recall at that, um, retreat them saying that that's kind of how our goals work then, to support
Yep. Is everyone good with the part that's in blue at the top? Any changes to the first goal, "Board, district, and community engagement, foster and enhance relationships while continuing to improve two-way communication with students, families, and community stakeholders?" Any changes to the part in yellow? Good. Are we good with the four activities listed? Okay, going down, so we can, activity five and six, maybe we can scroll a little further.
Number, sorry.
Go ahead.
For number six, um, I know there has been discussion, is that ongoing meeting with the WTA? Is that a wish of the WTA? I know the WAA has expressed that they don't feel it's necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so is this something that is going to still take place? Or is this something that we could delete as an activity if it's no longer going to happen?
Personally, I haven't had any, um, contact to ask whether they would like to continue if you're speaking about the WTA, but the way it's worded, I feel, is a benefit because it leaves it open and, it's listed as an invitation, which I think it's always nice to have the invitation, that if something arises and there's a wish down the road for us to meet again, um, that we could do that.
Two suggestions here, uh, no revision of what's on the spreadsheet, but, um, the invite union leaders, I feel, uh, and I wanted to do this last year and never got to it. I, I feel we as, and, and I'm kind of now suggesting for you, maybe as the board president, to write an invite to the, to the leaders of these various unions. Um, and as to the WTA, I know at the end of last year, they had made comments that they're looking forward to having meetings again this year, so.
Good. I think that's a great suggestion. I'm sure that Dr. Martzloff would help me to do something like that and have contact, so that we have some sort of contact from the board with all of ours, eight unions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Great suggestion. Okay, so let's go down to student wellness as our next goal. So our next goal is to support physical, mental- student wellness as our next goal. So, our next goal is to support physical, mental, and emotional needs of students by providing necessary, appropriate resources for wellness programs and initiatives. Does anyone wish to delete or amend that goal, just the part in yellow? Okay. Oh, Mr. McCall?
Just wondering why there's a comma there instead of the word "and," necessary and appropriate resources.
You're my grammar checker. Is that good?
Yes.
All right. So, let's look at the activities for that goal. Are there more activities on the next page for that, or do we just have the one? Okay. Is everyone satisfied with that activity, or would just add a further activity for that goal? So, it says, "To monitor and review an annual wellness report and use data to guide decision-making." That would be the activity that we would use to measure our goal of student wellness. Mrs. Van Seis?
I believe more than just the annual wellness report, because that's so specific. I mean, I would like to see an updated, some type of updated information given to us about the programs and initiatives to help improve the wellness, including mental health. You know, what supports do we have in place? What initiatives? What type of program? Sources of, you know, of strength? All of those things, more than just an annual wellness report.
And I suggest then that we say, "Monitor and review district initiatives and reports."
District initiatives and the annual...
And review reports, monitor and review districts. What do you think? Mrs. Bieger?
I like that, because there are several pieces that are shared with us, not just the annual wellness report, but like district updates that were given, different reports that come, so that...
Adjust the wording, though, so that we have...
Yeah. So, just review district initiatives.
So, we would take out annual wellness.
Yes.
Just to keep it a little more general. Monitor and review district initiatives and use data to guide decision-making.
I, I wonder if that word, just reports, should stay, though. Not saying it's the district annual wellness report, but we're given several reports over the year regarding updates and thinking of that district report we received a few months ago, where it's like, you know, midway through the year, later in the year, and it's really specific about many different initiatives that are taking place.
Does it say, "Monitor and review district initiatives and reports to use data to guide decision-making?" Right. So, "Monitor and review district initiatives and reports to use data."
That data.
Is that right?
I, I would probably say to use "that data." Yeah, that would work.
I'm fine with that. Is everyone okay with that? All right, let's go on to our next goal.
Eliminate the by-district wellness committee and the progress.
Sure. We could, we could actually, I'm wondering...
It's a really important committee, so...
Maybe we could add an additional progress indicator. I mean, our, our meeting minutes would be another progress indicator.
I'm just suggesting by the, the way you've got that worded, that we can only utilize presentations by the di- the district wellness committee. So, that's why I'm suggesting just deleting that.
Survey committee and others.
Yep.
Can, can you reword or just repeat your suggestion for...
Survey reports, other reports and presentations, period. We would assume that would include district wellness committee, as well as, you know, other areas that would, would give us reports and our presentations.
So, we're just, we're just removing the words institute, survey, report?
No, I'm suggesting remove the words by district wellness committee.
Oh, I see. Okay.
By limited, in other words.
Right. Exactly. The word, you got that part? Yes, please. Are we happy with that? All right. I see heads nodding. Let's go to our next one. This is our goal for student achievement. Provide the optimal, the optimal environment for learning, creativity, there should be a comma after creativity, correct? And engagement by supporting the fundamental educational needs for all students. Does anyone wish to change the wording of the part in yellow? Are we good with that part? Okay. So, looking at the activities, let's just look at activity one. The red part was a submission to add, I believe? Or is it a change?
I'm not sure, because...
Receive data on, let me, my glass is on. Receive data on instructional programs and student performance and use data to guide decision-making.
I wonder if this could be a number two. So, in...
Make the part in red a separate activity.
Right. And instead of putting special education, I know that we are intrigued by it. However, that's very, very specific, and it limits us. So, perhaps, I like the wording of the request, "Monitor and review reports regarding support services to maximize the potential of all students," because you, you have a multitude of support services, and I don't want to limit it to special education. We have at-risk students. We have ELL students. We just have some struggling learners. So, I would like to hear about the support services that we have throughout the district to help all of our students maximize their potential. And included in that would be a, a piece of the special ed, but I, I'm not just solely intrigued on that, you know, or pinpoint on that. I think it's important that we're looking at that for all of our students, because every single student is just as important as the other.
Is there agreement to delete the word "special education services"?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
So, I said, "Request monitor and review reports regarding support services," and then, "to maximize the potential of all students."
I like that, because it includes the whole department.
And included in that could be our AIS, our, you know, RTI, our resource rule.
Get rid of "and will be."
Yes.
And timeline and progress indicators could probably be duplicate to the one above.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lemay.
I think just instead of the word instructional programs, we were to copy and paste, we could just change that to supports.
Mm-hmm.
So, ensure, maybe...
Be supports.
Yes. Supports.
I'll repeat what I probably said last year, but my recommendation is actually, well, it's changing a little bit now, but I would take out number one completely, because we as a board do not analyze things. The district analyzes stuff. We review, request, and monitor, but we don't analyze. I don't know. I would say that we anal- like, because we depict that. So, we, we analyze what is given to us, and then we pose questions. So...
Review and analyze.
I, I mean, we could...
That we do also, because when we go to form our budget, we look at...
Things we're analytical.
...allocate funds based on needs from reports throughout the year.
And I guess, so you would define that as analyzing, then?
I would.
I think so.
Okay.
Is there, was there a different word that you preferred?
I just, I just don't think of us as analyzing, but that's fine.
Ensure spelled E-N.
Should we change it to review? Did you suggest that down there? Instead of analyze, change the word to review? Because we do review. Maybe that would be...
Well, analyze...
...the softer word.
Analyze implies review. When you analyze something, you have to review it.
No. I was just thinking of like different levels of connotations. Okay.
I think it's important, because that is our primary goal as a board member, is to support the student achievement. And so, we need to be analytical and make sure that we are not, like, a review to me, it can be a little bit more broad, and that's one thing I'm putting my hand in. Yeah.
Questions when things don't look right, you know, we, we ask questions.
And minor correction, ensure, we're not insuring an insurance policy, we are ensuring, E-N.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Bieger.
You have good eyes. All right. That's a good number. So, we've looked at one, two, and three. Let's look at four. Or we can look at three and four.
We only looked at one and two, because we took...
Oh, yes. That's right. We moved the other one down.
Yes. Those are all commas.
I think as an act, um, as a progress indicator, we could add, Mr. Lemay's, um, your new, your new assignment that you're on. Are you on a NISPA advocacy team now?
Correct.
Could that be another progress indicator for number three? Yes.
I feel that should be, yeah. I mean, you've got NISPA listed, but yeah.
Participation in...
Oh, I see. We do have NISPA already. I guess it's, I guess it's...
This is just a subcommittee, I guess you could say, of NISPA.
Final report.
Okay. Good with that. Thank you. So, onto number, onto activity four, "Monitor the district's professional development plan."
It's typo.
Yeah, there's a typo.
Oh, this one?
There's something weird, though. After the word "plan," it should say, "In meeting data team goals," or "to meet data team goals." I don't see why it says "is."
If you go back to monitor, if you start in your head, starting with monitor, then it's "is." Yeah.
Monitor that the district's professional development plan is meeting data team goals. Got it. Connects to district curriculum standards and aligns with the New York State teaching standards, and the district EPV R plan is set forth by the district. It's a little bit wordy, but I get it.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone wish to change that? Okay, go on.
Is this necessary? And I don't mean that with any disrespect. I just, this seems like something that we're already doing already. Does it need to be stated as a goal?
You want to just delete number four?
I'm kind of leaning that way. I mean, if, if, if our duty is to already do something, then do we need to make it a goal, I guess, is my... I, I could argue that both ways for this number four. I'm...
I do remember at that retreat them saying that why would you put a, create a goal, something that you already do in practice?
Right. And that's kind of what I'm...
Activity for the goal. The goal is at the top regarding student achievement.
Then would you eliminate number three?
Because these are all the things we do throughout the year.
We already do that.
To show that we are focused on student achievement.
I look at it as how. How are we going to meet that goal?
Yeah.
And when you look at last year, think about the next-gen learning standards that we had a presentation on with the science, all of those things. So, we're given the, um, the performance plan today, and then throughout the year, we have multiple things going on that align to make sure these presentations and what we're seeing and doing is matching up to what we were given in August. So, it is an ongoing activity to help us make sure that that goal is being met.
And actually, you bring up a really good point, because all that says there for number four is aligns with New York State teaching standards, and there is a shift to the next gen.
Absolutely.
In multiple content areas, so...
And that's our job on an annual basis to...
We should...
To watch over and monitor.
So, perhaps is the district, oh, change their district goals to shift with practice? We should do the same for number four.
Something different wording? I'm trying to keep...
Well, just to add, um, not just New York State teaching standards, but perhaps we want to put in next generation.
I, I think that is. It is. So, New York...
Call New York State.
Yeah. New York State teaching standards is, not everything's going next gen, like social is and science, but math is still...
It's coming, though.
Yeah. I mean, it'll vent like 2002.
Yeah. But it's a slow roll.
Eight twenty, never?
No, it's coming.
But it is, like, so we could be specific, but, um, you know, math is still an issue that we want to focus on, too, so I don't want to, you know, we can keep it just a common core "and" next gen, but the, I think the important thing is that we're still overseeing the New York State standards.
So, I think we should keep it. Based on like, that's a good point.
Okay. So, we're good with keeping it? All right, let's go on. Oh, yep.
And the indicators needs either to be a sentence or begin with a verb, because all the rest of them begin with verbs.
Yeah, yeah.
What are we doing? Are we, again, receiving, reviewing?
Reports.
Reviewing would work for this one, I think.
Review reports.
And presentations.
And presentations. Thank you so much. Okay, board efficacy. I added the part in red just to sort of have a couple more words and just identify and implement best practices. And best practices is such a, like, thrown-out word in education, but a principal here kindly reminded me that, like, what does that really mean? Because it's just whatever someone thinks is a good idea, and they decide it's the best practice. And then everyone just says, "Oh, yeah, it's the best practice." So, I thought that we could change it. We could identify, we could eliminate the part in blue where it says, "Identify and implement best practices," and just keep, "Implement board practices to better serve the community with responsiveness and efficiency."
I like it, but I don't think it's enough to be responsive and efficient. I think you have to be effective as well.
So, how, where can we put the word "effective," Mr. McCall? Fix my sentence.
Responsiveness, efficiency, and effectiveness.
I love it.
And I would still suggest leaving the word "identify" at the beginning of your sentence. Identify and implement.
Does everyone want that word back? I apologize for putting back "identify." I think that's a good idea as well. Identify and implement at the beginning. Identify and implement board practices to better serve the community with responsiveness, efficiency, and effectiveness. Okay. Looking at the first activity.
I would suggest we take out all that's in black, because we've already transitioned, and the red seems like a good replacement.
That was my suggestion. That was my edit, actually, was to, to delete that and change it to continue work on improving searchable digital formats, because we've already transitioned.
Right.
Now, we just need to continue to enhance it.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay, for sending that submission, and it really makes the process go faster, too, when there's ideas presented ahead of time. Helps to be more efficient. Okay. Looking at number two. Sorry about that.
I'm wondering if number two is, is actually necessary. We just work on board, um, you know, just being effective as a board, and we went over kind of what our expectations, roles, and responsibilities. So, and also, the evaluate at a board retreat, we don't evaluate. That's never come up, where, I guess, how could we even know if we didn't share board correspondence, I guess?
I think it's informal. Like, we have informal discussion at the retreat. Mrs. Bieger?
I'm just thinking, I know, I remember the spirit behind that, and I wonder if, um, if we're talking about identifying and implementing board practices, would we, um, and we've had discussions about these board practices and kind of done reflections. And so, what if that piece, instead of talked about Cheryl board-related correspondence, was just the activity of practicing the board, what, the title, the orange?
The work of the, honor the joint work of the board.
Because that's an activity that if we can do that and honor those pal- that policy, those, the wording that we, um...
We could have it say something like, "Honor the joint work of the board as approved at the July meeting."
Honor and respect.
Honor and respect the work of the board.
I feel like we're getting married.
Do you happen to hold your boy balls?
I would make sure, though, you name it or specify correctly, the title of that document, because I think it, I don't think it was just board. I think it was board superintendent or something along those lines.
I'll find it from the last month's meeting.
Anyone have that? So, we would redo number two. We would redo number two.
The wording that Mary's gonna come up with.
Mary's.
There's so much.
Could you say board relations? Work, work, work of the board.
Work of the Board of Education.
How about we use the word uphold, uphold?
Yeah, this is it, the, the. Work of the Board, two thousand nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
It's perfect.
So instead of having it say share all board correspondences, we would say uphold the work of the board. And work of the board would actually be a capital W because it was like a document that we approved.
Put it in quotes.
Or you can put it in quotes, yeah, that would be good.
And write from. But then we also have this part.
Approved at our July one meeting?
Yes. Total conduct. The board is permanent.
Perfect, I'm happy with that.
Evaluate at the board retreat and at the end of the year when we.
We can add another progress indicator of super eval.
Board eval.
Yes, so super eval is the, it would be called super eval with super and eval being capitalized. Um, and then it's, after that it would say board self-evaluation.
No hyphen in the super eval.
Yes.
And you need a verb?
Use or? Okay, so at the beginning of that, you could say, um, use super eval board self-evaluation. We put the word tool after evaluation or just leave it?
Board self-evaluation tool, I think that's good, yeah. And super eval, um, is one word. Though yes, it does have a capital E in the middle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're gonna put the word tool after evaluation. Perfect. Great, um. Number three, I think is still important to keep, um, hold one retreat for number four, we've got that. Um, do we wanna keep the part about on number five, transitioning to more technologically?
We have to decide on the wording for number four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold one retreat to discuss.
Do you want it to be to discuss or to improve?
I was thinking we would, um, delete the word discuss and insert the word improve. Is that good, everyone? I know I'm losing people. Rating. Hold one retreat to improve board operations, board development and/or goal setting.
We ask for a quorum, is that our goal? The quorum or our goal is a hundred percent?
For, um, are you asking about?
And number four, where's it, conduct retreats with board quorum in attendance.
I think our goal is a hundred percent.
I think.
I think our goal is too.
Yes, it's good.
That's what we should aim for.
Conduct retreats with one hundred percent board attendance.
May not meet that goal, but.
Right, but.
Right, but it's still the goal.
Should be a quorum, our goal should be.
The goal. I'm so sorry to backtrack, I just wanna make sure for number three, with our evaluating the board goals, is that timeline correct of when we are going to do the? Is that when we do it?
We, we have a, um.
Perfect, I just.
Parents and early summer review.
Beautiful.
Thank you. The, the January one is, is more, a lot more informal, but perhaps this year it will become a little bit more formal now that we're using the super eval tool.
Perfect, that's what I was curious, cause super eval's new for us.
I think you might also wanna put August in there, even though we're doing it here, but we're setting the board goals, which is actually step three of the board eval process.
Thank you, so for number three, we can have it say January slash June slash August.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, are we good on activity three?
Yes.
Are we good on activity four?
Yes.
I agree with your thought process that you started to mention on five, I think we can delete that one.
Okay, so we want to completely delete activity five?
Yes.
I'm, I support keeping the next goal to maintain a collaborative relationship with the superintendent.
Actually, th- it's interesting that someone else put that in there, that was one of the suggestions.
Yes, and that.
That I was thinking of.
It aligns with our board self-evaluation because that was one of our areas that we rated as developing.
Yes, that's, that, that same thing, that's why I was suggesting, going to suggest to put it in there. Um, monitors superintendent's objectives two times a year. Then there needs something there. And or period.
Red.
Yes, something, yes.
Is the period new sentence?
No, that would work with a semicolon.
Oh, okay. That.
That's not.
Two and true?
Yeah, I think two. I, I was thinking that too, only because, um. We're trying, the goal is to maintain a collaborative relationship, the goal is not to monitor performance, right? So we're monitoring the superintendent's objectives, which to me sounds like it could be kind of supervisory. But you might be doing it as a way of establishing communication to find out what things are important to the superintendent. And that's in order to improve lines of communication, I don't know, that's just the way I was thinking of it.
I agree.
I agree.
Cause just improving the lines is not a.
So what would be, what would be a progress indicator then for that goal, for that activity rather?
No, that would work.
Wouldn't be the indicator.
Just like that?
Yeah.
Of course, he could evaluate us too, so.
He would never. Are we set on activity five?
Yes.
Okay, activity six, I think we need, um, a verb. Or a little bit more words. But it's just board governance. But I, and I understand the thinking and I support it.
Improve board governance?
I'd just say improve board governance. Again, based only on super eval.
I wonder if that though is redundant with number two of upholding the work of the board.
That's a piece of the work of the board.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because a lot of what we, um. Agreed to do under the joint work of the board. Uh, enables and allows us to. Conduct our meetings efficiently, effectively and.
Yeah.
Sure.
In a responsive manner to our community.
Does make number six a bit redundant.
Right.
Yeah.
If we keep. Um, number two with uphold the work of the board as approved at our July first meeting, are, is everyone comfortable with then deleting activity six?
Maybe we wanna include some of the indicators though?
Yeah.
So we could copy all of those and move them up?
Yeah.
Perhaps?
Into number two, yeah.
And be careful with the, the verbiage of de-cognizant of open meeting laws, cause that implies that we're not.
Right, I know, I don't think that that's necessary.
Continue to follow open meeting laws.
I don't think that that's necessary, to be honest.
Even streamline executive sessions, I mean, I don't understand. How can you streamline, what happens in executive session that needs to be there, needs to be there?
Or you're saying stop talking. Or else we're telling people not to speak. It's by streamline, I, I'm not sure like who, who suggested that and you don't have to say, but I'm just wondering what, what that meant, does it mean to like? Make, make it go faster or like what?
Be more efficient?
Efficient.
Which is part of the work.
Which we, I was just gonna say, it was already addressed in the board document.
If it's been, it's sort of been addressed.
Right, okay, so it's sort of been addressed, it's sort of like a move issue?
Maybe we don't need any of it.
And in the, I'm gonna almost suggest we get rid of all three of those sentences that we just pasted, adhered to deadline requests, one have we not?
Individually.
Individually, yeah.
Individually?
Superintendent's evaluation.
Don't make me comment.
I think definitely can get.
I think though, we have our super eval board self-evaluation tool as our way to measure or not we're upholding and doing what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and so I, I'm in favor of just deleting the rest of that. The part that's.
That we just added.
Yes, sorry about that, but we can now delete activity six.
Yes.
Yep, and yes, delete the adhered to deadline requests?
I'm fine with that because all of that plays out when we have a retreat and when we complete our self eval.
Correct.
Or in, in, um, super eval.
Oh, he did not after we were saying.
I'm gonna start eating coffee at the table instead of water. I think we're ready to go.
That's great.
The next one.
Agree.
Budget development and fiscal oversight, oversee a fiscally responsible budget that upholds the mission and values of the school community. Oversee the capital projects to enhance district facilities and increase near aid to Williamsville Central School District. Does anyone wish to change anything that's written in blue?
I have a suggestion, but I'm sure it's just a personal one, that I feel that dealing with the budget is our fiscal responsibility, it's not a goal. And therefore, there's absolutely nothing on that whole page that needs to be there.
You know, and I'm gonna second that, cause I was actually gonna make the same exact comment, based on the, what we discussed at our retreat and stuff like that. This is what we're already mandated to do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a mandate, it's not a goal.
So I just have one comment with that, um, and I agree with what you're saying, that it is a repetitive goal, but, um, I've done much research on this. And spent a lot of time online looking at other districts locally as well as across the nation with board goals. And as I reported back before, student achievement and budget development are absolutely on every single board goal. Because those are the two tasks that a board holds, um, beyond a couple, but. We play a huge part in the budget development and what I love about number one that has been done is that we're able to request. We can say to, um, you know, Dr. Maritzoff. He asks us for our opinions now, what is it that you would like to include, how should we incorporate this, and then reports are made. And we see that our suggestions are on there based on what we've heard reports on. And then is this going to be fiscally responsible, and then it's brought back to us where we have to decide that, so. Even though it's part of our job, it is part of our job on an annual basis, but it's a really, really important job, I think. I think deleting budget development off of a board goal, um.
I don't disagree, but, uh, just because other districts are putting it there doesn't make it right either. On, on the flip side of that, a goal is something that we are looking to improve or change. We're not looking to improve or change anything here, we're looking to continue doing what we already do.
We are looking to improve and change when it comes to a budget by incorporating and, and new things.
So then that, that should be what the goal should be.
Mrs. Bieger?
Right.
Um, I agree with you, Mrs. Van Seis, and I do think we should always be striving to improve. So as far as budget development, yes, we do it, but we always, when we know better, we do better, right? Those activities are examples of things that we can do, rather than just be complacent and nod our head and say the budget looks great. We want to be requesting information, we wanna be listening and we want to collaborate with district administration to make sure we are recommending a budget. Um, that is fiscally responsible and supports the need of our community. I am also thinking about what happens with our board goals afterwards, and I recall that board goals are then published and shared, right? So if we have these goals, things that we work on and we don't have budget development as part of that, you know. I, I feel like that piece would be lacking because that is a, a, a good portion of our work in the spring, so. I, I, um, I agree with your idea of leaving it here, and partially because I really like the activities that support development here.
Mr. Maka, do you, uh, did you wanna weigh in on this one yet, whether we should keep it or not keep it, sorry to put you on the spot like that?
Um, I, I think we should keep it, I understand Dr. McCleary's point about it being, um, a requirement of ours. But listening to, uh, listening to Suzanne, you know, I, I basically agree, agree that, um, it's important. It's important work that we do that. We need to have goals for, I think, even though it's, uh. Even though it is a mandate, as you stated.
I, I listened to what Mrs. Van Seis and Mrs. Bieger have said and I understand the, those points.
All right, so is, we're good with this?
Yes.
Were there further activities for this goal on the next page or is that?
Yet.
Okay, everyone pat themselves on the back? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the goal-setting work session? Mr. Lemay, is there a second? Mr. Maka, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to return to the regular session? Mr. Lemay, thank you, Mrs. Bieger second, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. We are now going to vote to adopt these goals, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty district goals as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you, and Mr. Lemay will be our second. Is there any further discussion?
District goals or board goals?
Sorry, did I?
No, this is district goals, they're both two.
Oh, we have to go back to both of them.
All right, just, just making sure, cause.
Yes, and then, right, cause the, they both were, uh, presented in the work session and now we'll vote to approve both of them.
Got it.
So voting on the district goals first, all in favor? Thank you, opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, and now to adopt our board goals, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty board goals as presented? Mrs. Bieger, thank you, and Mr. Maka will be our second, all in favor? Motion, uh, opposed, sorry, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, September seventeenth at seven PM here in district office. I look forward to seeing everyone on opening day, August twenty-seventh in the North High School auditorium. Please arrive early to get a good parking spot. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mr. Lemay, thank you, and Mrs. Van Seis second. Um, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, goodnight, everyone.